Good evening, and welcome to a special remote select town meeting on Monday, February twenty-third. I will start by reading the instructions. This is Select Board Chair Tom Wacusa. I'll be confirming that all members or persons anticipating on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange.
Here.
Steven Rance.
Here.
Richard Foster.
I'm here, Tom, but I can't seem to get you guys on screen. I'm still trying to get you up on the screen.
Okay, and Mark Gold?
Here.
Okay, I have difficulty getting connected with my link also. And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Paul Pesterzic?
I'm on the phone right now, trying to get in.
Okay, and Deb Howes?
Deb is on vacation this week.
That's right, okay. And so, we talked about having the clerk take minutes, and that is Stephen Rance. Do you have a paper and pencil handy, Stephen?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so, you know, we can, it's taped, so Lynn says she'll do it best, but I'd like you to keep minutes also, so thank you. This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's meeting of the board on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, due to the outbreak of COVID- nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID- nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's Office, Governor's Order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. And this meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by telephone conference via, or video conference via Zoom, as posted in the town's website, and identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the meeting, all the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I, the chair, know otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone and computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So, the only member, only part of our agenda that we'll be discussing are really the the update and the discussion on special town meeting and the tax rate. This is something that has just come to our attention. As Paul Pesterzic began to look closer at setting a tax rate, he was given some information that we'll be discussing tonight in detail. And Lynn, I guess, should I turn it over to you first?
Sure. Yeah, you're, you were correct, Tom. We learned late last week, or mid-week last week, that the Department of Revenue would not certify our tax rate if the special town meeting warrant articles pertaining to financial matters were still outstanding, because the meeting hasn't been held and the warrant articles disposed of, they're considered pending, and DOR will not certify our tax rate until those matters have been dealt with.
Right, so, we have a few different options to deal with this that we discussed earlier, and did you want to have Rebecca Townsend present these, or yourself, or Paul?
Paul, did you have any more you wanted to add to the tax rate issue before we move on to, to what we need to do? Or what the options are?
Well, I, I think that's the, the general summary is that we cannot get our tax rate set. We do not get our tax rate set. The other aspect of it is we cannot send out another tax bill until we have a tax rate set. So, any long-term delay would have an impact on our cash flow, on our ability to pay bills over a long period of time, so I think it behooves us to do whatever we can in order to try to alleviate this in a timely manner.
Okay.
Mark Gold, can I ask you a question? What are the items on our, on our special town meeting warrant that have to do with setting a tax rate?
Basically, the Department of Revenue is saying all the financial articles, which would be one through thirteen.
Thank you.
Okay. So, those thirteen articles would need to either be voted on or dissolved, I guess, in some way, and so who should be presenting next?
I'm happy to just bring you up to speed to where we are right now. So, once we learned this information late last week, myself, Paul Pesterzic, the legal counsel for the town, and Rebecca Townsend met by phone and discussed what our options were. We have, there were quite a few conversations over the last few days, and I think we have what seems to be the best-case scenario plan in a less-than-ideal situation. And Rebecca, did you want to talk about where we are at this point, or did you want me to, to move forward with that?
You're doing fine. If you'd like me to start, I can, otherwise I'll just hurt you on this.
Sure. So, a couple, let me just remember where we are at this point, there's been so many conversations. Where we are right now is, we would like to schedule a special town meeting before, it needs to be before December fifteenth. We are considering the date of December nine, that's a Wednesday. We recognize that gathering large groups of people right now, it could be problematic. But what we would like to do to just dispose of the articles as expeditiously as possible is have the meeting convene, and then all of the articles on a consent agenda be moved, no action, and then they be taken up at the spring annual town meeting. So, there would be limited discussion. And Rebecca, are you wanting to jump in now? Am I explaining something?
Yeah, no, you're, you're fine, you're fine. You, you have it accurately. Because the need to have a meeting is important, to be able to dissolve the meeting, so that there is no warrant left pending, so that the DOR can certify the tax rate, this abbreviated form of a meeting would be necessary. Because we are still in a pandemic, and because there is a reasonable expectation from, from our citizens that we would not be meeting to take up business during the pandemic, it's advisable to deal with this technical problem, this technical issue that the town is facing, with a very technical solution of taking no action on the articles, dissolving the meeting, and then we can deal with the articles on, at another time. I would also recognize that Section seven of the, of Chapter ninety-two of the Special Acts of twenty-twenty allows for the Select Board, in consultation with an approval by the moderator, to lower the quorum. So, in this case, Long Meadows bylaws require that we have a quorum of fifty. Section seven allows the Select Board to reduce the quorum to no less than ten percent of that number, so as low as five. And doing so would acknowledge the severe threat that COVID does pose to our residents. It acknowledges the safety hazard in, in gathering large groups. And it recognizes that the, the motion that would be made would be to take no action. So, the net effect of this particular technical solution would be the same effect as if it were continued to be delayed, which is what I had indicated in all of my prior declarations, that I would not be having a meeting for robust discussion this winter while COVID is still a threat.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much. I guess the, and then again, it's clear to the board that, you know, in our prior discussions about town meeting, that, you know, we will, by taking this action, we'll put ourselves back in a similar position to where we thought we were several weeks ago, where we could go ahead and set our, our tax rate, move forward, and then vote on all these issues in a spring town meeting. I guess I would ask if there's any questions from the Select Board? And Mark Strange, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Stephen Rance, any questions?
I just want to make sure I understand that by doing this, this is the same as not having the meeting to begin with, where all issues that may or may not affect town finances are just being put off until the spring. And I think, Paul, I think I asked you this last time, is there anything that, there is, there is nothing on this one agenda that's being, taking no action on, that is going to affect town finances between now and spring town meeting?
There is nothing that is critical that needs to be acted upon on these thirteen warrants. You know, some of them would be niceties, but none are critical.
Okay. Thank you. Richard Foster, any questions?
Yeah, Tom, not a question. I just make a statement, make sure I'm right. If we follow through on this and, and, and transfer all of these articles to the spring meeting, that will, that will also include all the citizen petitions as they are, without any further action on their part?
Moderator, what'd you say?
That's the Select Board's prerogative. I advise doing so. It, it makes no sense not to.
Okay. All right, good, so I answered your question, Richard?
That's correct.
Okay, and Mark Gold?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. After, I, because I asked the question of what were the items, and Paul had said articles one through thirteen, and if you look at the, the warrant, I just went back and looked at it. You know, three through seven, and nine, ten, and twelve were all part of a consent agenda that wasn't going to get a whole lot of discussion. I guess the question I have is, why are we choosing to not do anything, rather than hold a town meeting, do these critical things, which is going to be, which were going to be by consent agenda anyway, and defer the rest? Because, to my mind, some of these are important, like there's three hundred thousand dollars to fund the budget that we need. You know, if we're going to go to the trouble of holding a town meeting, why wouldn't we just vote on the critical items?
If I may, Mr. Chair? From what I understand from Mr. Pesterzic, these are not critical. They are niceties, not necessities, is his wording. And so, that's the, the first thing I'd like to observe. The second issue is that voters reasonably expected, given the two prior declarations, that we would not be meeting. And so, to have a, a, a meeting where, especially with a reduced quorum, where some aspects, some articles are acted upon affirmatively, would be patently unfair to citizens who held the reasonable expectation that no affirmative votes would be taken on this warrant during a pandemic. And it would draw people out and put them in danger at a time when I, I cannot condone that.
Okay, Mark, any additional questions? You have another question or comment?
Yeah, I, nothing. I, I mean, I, I understand Rebecca's comments, you know, but the fact is, we're holding a town meeting. And, and, you know, whether we agree that it's a town meeting to vote, or a town meeting not to vote, we're holding a town meeting, and people who show up to the town meeting, you know, with the help of the moderator, control the town meeting. And I don't think, you know, I think it's, it, it's, it's presumptive on our part to say, we're going to hold a town meeting, and we're going to tell the people who come there, but you can't vote on anything. Because if they choose to vote on something, they can choose to vote on it. That's the issue that I have. How do you hold a town meeting and keep anybody from doing what people may want to do? Because we must put this as a town.
So, the, you are correct, the meeting does, the, the meeting is a legal meeting. And while people may indeed show up anyways for this, the notion that we're trying to get things done, I mean, accomplished in, in any kind of vote, I don't know what kinds of votes could happen. If the motion is to take no action, of course, people could decide not to do that. But there are some, some items on the warrant that, to my knowledge, could not be acted upon anyways, as there are zoning issues, and to my knowledge, the planning board hasn't met. So, they cannot be acted upon. So, there are some things that couldn't be acted upon anyways if we, you know, with a, with a legally-held meeting on December ninth.
Okay, thank you. You know, my, my take on this is, you know, one is, I don't think we want to confuse the public. You know, I think that we've told them consistently that we're not going to be voting on these issues until the spring, and so therefore, it wouldn't make sense to them open up, you know, for us as a Select Board, to say that we should, you know, just because we're taking votes, that we actually should vote on these items. I think I'm in support of a consent agenda, to move everything, everything to the spring. So, that way, folks who have comments to make about any of the items that would be discussed, they can make them into town meeting. You know, it, we don't want to give people a message that town meeting is not important, you know. We want people to attend a town meeting, and they always have, and, and we, you know, for us to say, well, this is going to be a different kind of a town meeting, you know, so you don't have to attend, didn't make sense to my, my, my thinking. And, but what we're saying is that it is, it is dangerous to come out. You know, the COVID rates are, are breaking new records in the direction of more cases, so we are just going to do what we can, and, and I think I might be in the support of reducing the quorum, so that we don't have to have many people come. But, of course, the doors will be open, and that's, Rebecca, that would be right. Even if we reduce the quorum, the doors would still, people could still attend this meeting, correct?
True, yes.
Okay. So, that's all I, you know, we've kind of gone through things. So, we could entertain two motions, you know, one would be to, and I don't know what the best wording for the motion would be, but one would be to, you know, follow through with a order to, you know, have a consent agenda, agenda, you know, to dissolve, or take no action on the warrant, and dissolve the town meeting, to be moving all pending items to the spring meeting. And then a second motion would have to do with reducing the size of the quorum. So...
The only thing we can legally do tonight is reduce the size of the quorum.
No, no.
Anything with, with the warrant.
Okay, all right.
The warrant's been posted.
Okay, so, so we would have to, do we have, and actually, we don't even set the date, right? Because December ninth would be set by the moderator, correct?
Lynn was trying to talk them. I'm not sure. Correct, the moderator sets the date and time. But tonight, you cannot even vote on the reduction in the quorum. It has to be posted for at least seven days prior to that vote. So, if that is something you would like to entertain, we could post that for your meeting on December seventh, your regular meeting, and we, you could vote on it that night. And then I, I just wanted to clarify that it was, you were just giving an example of the meeting would be open, but that there won't actually be any doors open, because this would be held outside.
Thank you for reminding us, yes.
Yeah, Tom, I have, Tom, I have one other comment.
Please, Richard, yeah.
The, we, to the best of my knowledge, we have not told the general public that everything was going to be deferred to the spring. I think the next meeting was scheduled in December at some time, so that meeting has not actually been canceled, which then it would likely take us to the spring. But we had, there was talk that we had told the public that everything would be taken in the spring before this meeting, and that's, I don't think that's an accurate statement. We're still in limbo as to whether we could hold the meeting or not. And, and as I say, this, this new condition came up now, which is kind of forcing our hand that we must do something. Is that correct?
I think you're right, yeah, I, I spoke it here, really, because we are just postponing it thirty days at a time. I don't know if anyone else wants to comment. Okay.
I, I, Tom?
Yes.
Actually, I was under the impression that the town moderator basically said, you know, we're going to, we will, we only have these thirty-day windows, we're going to be postponing them pretty much until the spring. I, I, I was under no impression we're going to have a town meeting before the spring, based on what the town moderator has said. And I think what we want to tell the citizens of Long Meadow is, because of this technicality in the state law that says these, these articles were on the warrant, and therefore, they have to be acted upon, or, or at least dealt with, and in this case, dealt with by putting them off until the spring, we can set our tax rate. If that hitch was, if this, this apparently, you know, if our finance director doesn't know something in the town law, the state law, I'm, you know, that to me is, this has to be in some nook and cranny someplace, because if there's anyone who's on top of stuff, it's Paul Pesterzic. So, the fact that this thing exists, and therefore, because of this out-of-the-law, we have to do this, fine and dandy, but I think, and, and I think that's the way it needs to be presented to the town. But I've never been under the impression, I, I tend to disagree with you, Richard, that, that, that we were going to have a town meeting between now and the spring, that, that, you know. And as, as of numbers and what's going on in the country with COVID-wise, it certainly appears to be apparent that this is the wisest course of action to take.
Well, why don't we ask the moderator? She's, the moderator's there. I thought she had a meeting tentatively scheduled coming up in December. I may be, may be mistaken, I may have lost track of the meetings also.
If I may, the, in each of the declarations, I included text that indicated that I do not anticipate that we would meet at the deferred date. So, the first recess and continuance, I wrote, I, because of the way the virus is trending, I do not anticipate that we will be meeting on that date. But by law, I'm only permitted to extend a meeting by thirty days. And so, I did for thirty days, and then I did it again for another thirty days. And so, there is a meeting that is listed as December fifteenth, and I would have to indicate on another declaration to amend that one, which I would, I would only do if we have a reduced quorum, because I, I do not want to bring, to, to, to bring a lot of people out and about. But, you know, there is one scheduled on the fifteenth, but that was a, kind of a dummy date in my, my view, was only because the, the law required thirty days maximum. I had fully intended on extending that, and said so in, in all my public statements and in the declarations themselves.
Yeah, I, I just wanted clarification for the record that that was our next tentative date for a meeting, and I agree with everything you said. It likely was subject to cancellation, but I just wanted to clarify the record.
Okay.
It, it would, yes, it, it, by law, it had to be the fifteenth. But in the declaration itself, I indicated it, it would be later.
Okay, and so, and following Rebecca's comments about trying to keep this a very small outdoor, safe sort of event, where we are just going to, you know... uh, take one or two votes to dissolve the meeting and, um, resolve this issue for the tax, um, collections. Um, I guess I'm thinking that we should discuss in our next meeting, put it on the agenda, uh, the idea of reducing the quorum. Uh, I know we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I'm wondering if other people would feel the same way about putting it on the agenda. Um, you know, Mark Strange, any comments?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, not only do I want to, I think we probably have to, don't we?
It's optional. We can, we can decide. I mean, I, you know.
I mean, I guess, like, we, we don't have to, or, um, we have to was a bit strong. Uh, all things considered, particularly, you know, the safety of the residents and trying to effectuate the business we need to get done, um, I, I would be in favor of voting on, um, a reduced quorum at the next meeting.
Okay, and Steve Morantz, what do you think?
Uh, I can see no reason why we would not, uh, do that.
Okay, and Richard Foster?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to wait to our final discussion at our next meeting, Tom.
Okay, so, but you think we should put it on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, I think we should have the question on the agenda. There's no doubt about that.
Great, thank you. And, uh, Mark Gold, you think we should have the agenda, on the agenda?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can certainly put it on the agenda. I, I'd just like to ask that in, in preparation for that meeting, which I assume is our stand, regular meeting next Monday night, that somebody talk to us about how we're going to manage the agenda at that meeting. Because my big fear is we cut the, we, we, we cut the quorum down to some lower number and, and twenty people show up and, and, and run the town. And, you know, that we didn't plan on it. And, and we can do all we want to to tell people, look, if nobody shows up, if five people show up, we're going to, you know, just postpone this. Our intent is to postpone the, the warrant. But we can't postpone the warrant. Only the town meeting can postpone the warrant.
If, if I may, um, I think Long Mado citizens are smart enough to know that this is a technical solution to a technical problem. This is for everyone's safety. That reducing the quorum is done because we're concerned about safety, that we do not wish to see this virus spread any further than it has. And that we're doing this strictly because of this, uh, surprise from last week. That nobody really wants to do this, but we're doing it because we have to. And I, I would, as I had said just a moment earlier, um, i- if there's, uh, I would have this declaration to have this meeting on the ninth, so long as we do have a reduced quorum because public safety is the most important thing.
Okay, and can, just to say that, um, you know, the warrant is closed, so they, they can't introduce new articles. And the, the financial articles that are really of consideration, um, have already have, you know, were put on by the selectmen and already have been approved by the, uh, finance committee. So it, if, if they do act on one, it's not really going to have an impact on, on anything going astray? Mm-hmm. And, and I think, given this hypothetical, that, you know, a group of citizens would form between now and the, the meeting on the ninth and try to, you know, vote on specific articles or change things. Um, in the spring, we could always put these back on the warrant and the town could then speak to any of these issues. If I, am I correct, right? Did I make corrections? Paul, I see you shaking your head.
Yes, and for the most part, most of these are going to reappear. Um, you know, the amounts may change, but, um, I don't see any of them going away, um, between now and then by some miraculous happening. So more than likely, they're all going to be on the annual town meeting or our next town, next town meeting's warrant, so.
Okay, great. Um, all right, and in closing, uh, Lynn, is, yes?
Our next meeting is the seventh of December, unless I'm wrong. That's the first Monday in December. So in terms of all, all those dates, because I think Mark said something about next Monday, which wouldn't be our meeting. Um, but the seventh, having this on the seventh makes no difference about having the town meeting on the ninth, Rebecca?
No, as long as the select board votes to reduce, they have to give, uh, I believe it's seven days notice and town council isn't on this call. Seven days notice that to the public that they intend on voting to reduce the quorum for this particular town meeting only because of the, the health concern, because of the state of emergency that we're in. And after seven days, they may vote on it and.
And, and, but if you have the meeting on the ni-, that, that you thought the meeting would be the ninth?
That's fine.
Okay.
And, and if, I mean, a- as I said, town council is, is available to confirm this.
Yeah, but if we're meeting on the seventh and you want a town meeting on the ninth, that's not seven days notice.
The notice is placed. So the notice could be placed tomorrow that you intend to vote to reduce.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Great.
Actually, the notice is, the, excuse me, this is Rose Crowley. Um, the, the notice just gives the, gives the public notice that you are going to consider reducing the quorum. Okay?
Hmm. Well, thank you, Rose. Uh, Rose, did you have any other comments about our discussion? Do you see me on track?
You seem to be very much on track.
Okay, thanks. And, and Lynn, do you have any closing comments?
Um, just, I'll just clarify for those on listening or watching. Rose Crowley is the attorney, uh, for Dordy Wallace Pillsbury Murphy, um, the town uses for legal counsel. Um, no, I, I don't have any more, um, comments.
Okay, so, uh, you know, this is a good discussion. Thank you, everyone, for, for joining us. And, um, I guess we could look for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Okay, and we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Lynn, you want to do that for us?
Okay, um, Tom Lucusha?
Yes.
Uh, Mark Gold?
Yes.
Steve Morantz?
Yes.
Richard Foster?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for this, uh, for getting together and we'll see you on, uh, Monday, December, uh, nine, or seven. Nope, it isn't the seventh.
You decide to do, damn it.
This is our next meeting.